Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. This December 18th, 2014, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Irving Middle School Philharmonic Orchestra under the direction of Angelica Kelzak.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic
That was absolutely beautiful, and the director was Angela Kales. I apologize for my mispronunciation earlier. Thank you all. Absolutely beautiful.
Madam Chair, I believe the principal at Irving Middle School is here tonight, Danny Little. Danny, thank you so much for being here.
Paul, thank you so much.
The students were wonderful, and we thank all of our parents for being here tonight and letting us enjoy your very talented children. You all have a happy holiday.
In order to comply, next we have our certification of our closed meeting. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the December 18th, 2014, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in a motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. The foregoing shall also be deemed to include the certification of each school board member who served on a student disciplinary committee, and those closed committee meetings are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia, and that only student disciplinary matters were heard, discussed, or considered in those closed committee meetings. Is there a motion? Ms. Smith, seconded by Mr. Valkov. All those in favor? And that is unanimous. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then upcoming meetings and agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cellphones, and I will now call Mr. Latif for an announcement.
Thank you. We are recognizing National Mentoring Month in January. National Mentoring Month highlights mentoring and the positive impact it can have on young lives. This month-long outreach campaign focuses national attention on the need for mentors, as well as how each of us, individuals, businesses, government agencies, schools, faith communities, and nonprofits, can work together to increase the number of mentors and assure brighter futures for our young people. Positive relationships between mentors and their mentees have been shown to encourage young people to stay in school, believe in themselves, and live up to their potential. National Mentoring Month marks its 14th anniversary in 2015 with the theme, quote, "Be Someone Who Matters to Someone Who Matters," encouraging citizens to volunteer as mentors.
Thank you so much. Now for our resolution concerning the funding of public education in Virginia. I call on Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Ms. Darnett-Kofax. I'm trying to get around this mountain. Resolution concerning the funding of public education in Virginia. Whereas the Virginia General Assembly has the constitutional obligation to provide for a system of free public elementary and secondary schools for all children of school age throughout the Commonwealth, and shall seek to ensure that an educational program of high quality is established and continually maintained, as well as to determine the manner in which funds are to be provided for the cost of maintaining an educational program meeting the prescribed standards of quality, and shall provide for the apportionment of the cost of such program between the Commonwealth and the local units of government comprising such school divisions. And whereas Virginia's standards of quality require the General Assembly to provide for the support of public education as set forth in the Constitution of Virginia, which finds that the quality of education is dependent on the provision of, one, the appropriate working environment, benefits, and salaries necessary to ensure the availability of high-quality instructional personnel; two, the appropriate learning environment designed to promote student achievement; three, quality instruction that enables each student to become a productive and educated citizen of Virginia and the United States of America; and four, the adequate commitment of other resources. And whereas Virginia's state aid to public education has failed to keep pace with ever-increasing and evolving accountability requirements within Virginia's standards of accreditation and standards of learning, with changes in student population and demographics, particularly growth in special needs populations and students from low-income households and students learning English, as well as with new mandates imposed upon school divisions by Virginia and federal policymakers; and whereas state direct aid K-12 appropriations have been reduced from 35 percent of the general fund in fiscal year 2009 to below 30 percent in fiscal year 2014, and beyond with the state's reduction in funding for K-12 occurring through structural policy changes since fiscal year 2009, such as reduced state funds for school support personnel and administrative and employee benefits, by systematically underestimating the true overall costs of providing a high-quality education, and by using state-operated lottery proceeds to supplant general fund support for K-12 education instead of serving their original purpose as additional resources for public education. And whereas state underfunding has left localities to pay for the increased costs of education required by state mandates to improve public school performance, with localities currently paying 56 percent of the state versus local share of public education rather than the 45 percent they should be paying, as defined by the standards of quality, which has forced localities to budget $3.55 billion in fiscal year 2013 above the state-required local effort to maintain the actual costs of public education. And whereas real estate values in Virginia, and therefore local government revenues, continue to be depressed in Virginia, increasing only 2 percent in fiscal year 2013, with little prospect for even average growth rates in future years without significant local tax rate increases. Okay, two more to go. Whereas increased funding for public education is needed to ensure that the state meets its responsibility to provide a high-quality educational system that prepares students for college and careers as a core funding function of state government, and to promote economic development in Virginia, and that without such investments, Virginia's economic competitiveness and ability to attract new businesses will falter. Now, therefore it be resolved that the Fairfax County School Board and its division superintendent, in conjunction with the Virginia School Boards Association and the Virginia Association of School Superintendents, call upon the Virginia's General Assembly to immediately increase the state's share of funding for public education to levels commensurate with the true and fairly calculated costs required to fully implement the requirements envisioned by Virginia's standard of quality, standards of accreditation, and standards of learning, as expected by all of the Commonwealth citizens. I so move. Thank you, Michael Malloy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second of my Mr. Valkov. Thank you for that, Mr. McElveen. Would you like to speak on it?
I think I was, I spoke enough on it already.
Mr. Valkov?
No.
No. All right. We have the resolution before us. All of those in favor of the resolution? The vote is unanimous. Thank you so much. I think that's a very important one, and I appreciate all of those who worked to get this out to us. Thank you so much. My computer's slow today. Next, we have citizen participation. If there is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Citizens are encouraged to write the school board on any school-related topic. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes, and provide at least 16 copies of their presentation for distribution to the board. Tonight, two citizens have signed up to address the board, George Becerra and Steve Greenberg. Mr. Becerra?
Good evening, Dr. Garza and school board members and leadership team. I wrote down my comments this time. So sorry, I'm going to look down at my paper. Wanted to talk about three things tonight. The joint budget recommendations, which we'll talk about later, the SAGs, Student Achievement Goal Number One, academics, and then finally the school budget, the upcoming school budget. On my first point, joint budget recommendation, I'd like to highlight on your third page of your summary, a key point that I see this community is looking forward to is the process for exploring joint opportunities using a subcommittee model like this GIP to study the issues, opportunities, and develop recommendations. In terms of also talking about the GIP, I know you guys were presented on the 8th of this month, a presentation on equity. I did not see or maybe feel the superintendent of the school board embrace this issue like the Board of Supervisors have. I feel that honestly, you guys are far apart on this. I mean, there's obviously some members who are definitely on track, or at least in agreement, but what I had saw is that school board members are going into specific issues, which I didn't think that was a proper opportunity. It was more a look at the systematic overview, why the equity presentation, why the GIP had created that. There's other opportunities like the Joint Strategic Budget Governing Task Force to look at those line items and so forth. One thing to my two friends, elected officials in Lee, I'd like to see how this pans out between both of y'all, and how the issue in Lee is resolved, and how this county moves forward, especially with Mount Vernon and Lee in terms of this equity issue, in terms of national issues that have come about, in terms of what our nation is going through. Second point, or second is the Student Achievement Goal Number One, in terms of closing all achievement gaps for all subgroups. I guess concerning was the work session presentation on the same December 8th about white and Asian SOL scores having dropped over the years when looking at scaled scores, more of a drop compared to Hispanic and Black. One thing that a lot of minority communities have always focused on is all children, and that was also definitely concerning of the direction on that, especially during an election year that's not a great way to, let's say, sell our system with our scores going down. And I look at it as an opportunity. You know, if we're looking at the Board of Supervisors for money, maybe that's a way of also to sell them, this is what is happening in our county, and it isn't a Hispanic and Black issue in terms of achievement, but it's all our kids. One way to, question I have is also with the scaled score. From what I've been told, talking with the data analysts, this isn't something new. So why is it something new this year in terms of the scaled scores and look at closing the achievement gap? If we looked at other approaches, why is this something new? I think that's something that maybe mathematically, statistically should have been done already, or as part of the, I know you have volumes on this in terms of the presentations you get every, on the summary on all the SAGs. How, when looking at the data, also, I don't want to jump to conclusions on those, because I know you're probably still getting data back on that, but statistically, when you look at the subgroups, they're not the same sample size, population size, so you have to look at standard deviations. So make sure you're comparing apples and apples. So that's why looking at the standard deviations, you need to look at that, too. How intertwined will closing the achievement gap be with the strategic plan? That's another thing that came out of that. This is, I usually just make small comments. Also, when dealing with the issue of closing the achievement gap, I've also said, why is, or this time, why is Dr. Prestidio the only one who is in charge of evaluating this? There is, under Mr. Marty Smith, our pro-evaluation. We've always said, why aren't the program evaluators doing this in closing the achievement gap and answering these questions? And a personal note, too, I know in terms of what the public sees, you know, I would have liked to seen Dr. Dockery over here in the box in the booth. For me personally, I think Dr. Prestidio is being, was getting hammered with a lot of hard questions. Reminded when Dr. Noonan was presented, I saw him one time at FCCPTA, and I think that's the first time, I think, I recognized Ms. McGlocklin and how tenacious she is in her role in advocating for all kids. The budget, one thing that's coming up, we're waiting for January 8th coming up for the superintendent's advertised budget, so we'll see how that goes. I just don't want the same mistakes that were made last year. You know, the advertised budget got modified without a board vote, and then when it came down to voting time, it couldn't be done, because illegally you couldn't modify to go back with the time constraints. You know, it was a change from the advertised, and then different changes weren't voted on. So on that end, and also to thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Becerra. Mr. Greenberg?
Dr. Garza, Chairman, Darnett-Kofax, esteemed school board members, and renowned Mr. Latif. I'm Steve Greenberg, President of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent educators who care, and I'll be speaking tonight in regards to 2.04 resolution concerning the funding of public education in Virginia. Please let it be publicly known that the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers supports this resolution and stands with the FCPS School Board, the VSBA, and the VASS. The AFT locals in this state have also called on the governor and appreciate the governor's recent announcement. We thank Governor Terry McAuliffe, who released his budget bill this week and offered several recommendations to help close the budget shortfall with new revenue. He also wants to bolster the VRS Teacher Retirement Fund by $150 million. The governor will need our support. Our schools are at risk, and there is no assurance that things are going to improve. Here are a few things that all of you can do right now to help support our children and lift our voices. Contact your delegate or your senator by email, phone, or better yet, go see them in person and look them in the face. Write letters to the editor of your local paper. Mostly go out and talk to your friends. Get out there, talk to people, get them active. This is serious. We'd like to thank Jeffrey Connor Nair and our partners at the Commonwealth Institute for their lobbying work with us in Richmond on this. Let's keep our focus on what we need to do for our schools over the next year and not lose sight of our responsibility to protect our children. Our vision at FCT is very clear, as is our path. We will protect the children and the teachers with you. Everyone will be made to look in their mirror and then be held accountable. With that said, and considering it is the holidays, and I was watching an old movie the other night about ghosts and past and present and all this other stuff, I thought I'd do just a little drama for you. This is called "A Budget Carol." I am the school board member of Budget Present. Three and a half years ago, I was elected, and all I wanted to do was my best and provide for the children, and my friends and my parties that promised me their help, they've just not been any. I'm so disappointed, and I'm trying so hard. Don't be too upset, school board members. You're doing your best, and you have lots of people in this community that care. And remember, your friends are up for reelection in 2015.
I am the budget of the past, and I am a student, and I name, my name is Harris, and I'm four years old, and I get to go to school next year. I'm very, very excited. I'm going to see friends. I'm just so happy, because my friends are going to go to school with me, and we're going to have fun, and someday I'm going to take care of them and be a great leader, and learn, and we're going to have fun, and the adults care about us.
You're right, Harris. The adults do care about you, and you will be a great leader. To be continued. Thank you for your time this evening. Good night.
Ah, Mr. Greenberg, bringing the spirit of Christmas alive. Next, Student Representative Matters, and I call on Mr. Latif.
I cannot top that, so I'm going to pass.
Impossible.
Chairman, Darnett-Kofax, Dr. Garza, members of the school board. Happy almost winter break. Although 2014 is winding down, these last two weeks have been arguably, for me at least, the busiest of the whole school year. Back on December 6th, I attended Dr. Garza's listening tour in Region 1 at Hunter Woods Elementary School. I'm so glad Dr. Garza is making herself accessible to our community and giving members of our community the chance to share their thoughts and opinions. It's really great. On the 9th, I visited Oakton High School and spoke with their leadership class along with Oakton Principal Dr. Banbury. On the 11th, we had our fourth meeting of the Student Advisory Council this school year. We had our annual food tasting. It was pretty good. You can read about that in the last newsletter. On the 11th, I was also joining the school board at the orientation for the Student Leadership Development Program. I was very impressed by the students who'll be mentoring this year, and I'm looking forward to learning more about each and every one of them. This past Monday, I was at Fairfax Ridge along with Ms. McGlocklin, Dr. Lipp, and Dr. Baylor, where we were working on the preliminary plans for this year's community conversation on teen stress. I'm very much looking forward to it. I had the chance to participate at the first one held this past May at Hayfield, and I think it's, it is really, really great that we as a county and we as a community are talking about this important issue. And speaking of Hayfield, I visited the Hayfield Hawks on Tuesday and met with their SGA officers and SAC reps. I also had the chance to visit the Spirit Shop that the school board voted on November 6th to dedicate to the memory of Principal David Tremaine. Although I'm looking forward to winter break, it is actually pretty bittersweet. December 31st marks the halfway mark, as my term as student representative. Try not to get emotional. So I have some important information for every FCPS high school freshman, sophomore, or junior who is watching this. If you're watching a school board meeting, first of all, that's great. Second of all, applications to be a candidate for the 45th Student Representative to the Fairfax County School Board are now available. The student rep is the highest-elected student position in Fairfax County public schools. You get the chance to represent 186,000 of your peers, interact with members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. You learn more information about FCPS than you had ever dreamed possible, and you get to sit right here in one of these very comfortable or not comfortable chairs, depending on who, depending who on the school board you ask. You do not have to be a member of the Student Advisory Council to run, and I was not a member of the SAC when I ran this last February. Applications are available through your school's leadership sponsor and are due no later than Friday, January 16, 2015, at 4:30. The SAC is tasked with the election of the student representative, and one interesting tidbit I learned, from the 1970s, when the student representative position was created in Fairfax County, until the 1990s, when Virginian school board members started being elected instead of being appointed, the student rep was the only person at the table who had been through an election process. So the convention to elect the 45th student rep will take place at Woodson on Thursday, February 12th, with a snow day the next Thursday. I encourage members of the school board to attend. The last one was very interesting and a fun experience, and I'm not just saying that because I won. And it was great, very interesting. If you have any fears about American democracy being alive and well, go to one of those. Lastly, I just want to say that although I'm going over the proverbial hump of my time with the school board, I take my responsibility of representing my fellow students very seriously. This has unquestionably been the greatest experience of my time in high school, so I do not plan on slowing down until I address the school board for the final time in June. So happy holidays, happy new year, and I'm looking forward to the next six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Harris. We are not worried about you slowing down. Next, we are going to move on to our action items. 4.01, the Annual Monitoring Performance Report on Student Achievement Goal 1, Academics, and I call on Ms. Evans for a motion.
I move that the school board accept the monitoring report on the current progress toward attaining the school board goals for Student Achievement Goal 1, pursue academic excellence.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Valkov. Ms. Evans, would you like to speak?
I'm not going to comment at this time, no.
All right. Mr. Valkov?
I have no comments right now.
Any other comments? All right. Okay. Ms. McGlocklin, and then Ms. Reed.
Oh, well, I, my comment was going to be that I know that the board had a work session while I was out of town, so I thought a lot of great questions were generated when this was introduced as new business, so I thought, for the benefit of the public, if not for myself, that it might be nice if people just highlighted at least a few things they felt that were meaningful that came out of the work session for why we're here tonight voting on this as an action item.
I do believe we were going to do that during the committee reports, at least the summaries that we do, but other people can comment. I appreciate, I appreciate your advocacy. Ms. Reed?
During the work session, several of us, including myself, voiced appreciation for the very detailed work that the staff did to compile this report, but also a bit of consternation that the most important points didn't jump right off the page. And as a result of that, staff worked very hard with Dr. Garza to, in fact, come up with what I think is a very good executive summary that highlights kind of the strengths and weaknesses. And I think it's important for all board members to read and all understand what the key messages are, as well as members of the public. Sometimes when you get too much information, I think it dilutes the message and the understanding. And it's very important, I think, that with academic achievement being such a high priority for us, that we all understand where we are and have a very truthful understanding of that. And as I'm looking, though, on the board docs, I wonder if that most recent executive summary was posted. We should just make sure staff can double-check that so that the public has an opportunity to see that as well. So I was very pleased to see that. And the reason that's so important is because I believe this will help guide our discussions as we start talking about strategic plan and strategic budget and going forward. So with that context in mind, I very much support this report.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
Yeah, sort of along those lines. For those who are maybe watching this for the first time, this is probably one of the most important things we do, is to sort of, you know, review how we're doing on student achievement, you know? And so I just want to make sure that anyone in the public who is interested in our conversation previous to now knows where that is, and you can go online to the school board site, and you can find our conversation from two weeks ago, when we were first presented with the report, and then from December 8th at our work session. We had a long conversation about that as well. There also was sent out to the board a link to the Closing the Achievement Gap current work, and that was one of the questions I asked. And so if we could make sure that that's able, that people can find that as well, that would be wonderful.
I'll get those posted during the meeting.
Thank you.
Any other board members? Dr. Garza?
Yes, we just checked, and that document will be posted in the morning. That's the typical procedure, because it's considered a follow-up, so it will be posted for the public in the morning. And I thank Ms. Reed for asking us to do that. As kind of a follow-up to Ms. McGlocklin's point, I thought the conversation, this is, there's no conversation we had that's more important. there's no conversation we had that's more important than the conversation we've had around student achievement. So certainly the board meeting, it was a long discussion, lengthy discussion. I was very impressed and proud of our team. I think they did a really good job of, I think, answering very, very challenging questions, things that, you know, we're very concerned about. You know, I'm very proud of the hard work of our schools, I will tell you, as I visit schools, just like you do. You see people working very, very hard to serve children and to do the very best they can for children. But we acknowledge that we're not there yet and we have achievement gaps that we're very concerned about and we know we need to continue to get, get better. I appreciate the continued work and the challenge to make sure that we're answering the questions that you all have as policymakers and as the community. So I do want to thank Dr. Dockry and Dr. Presidi and their teams for, and Dr. Kathy Oliver and her team, who does a great job. And of course, our program evaluation people are always involved in that. They're, they're very involved. But those documents, I think, were very helpful today as well, so those will be posted to the public. But again, I want to thank you for your time and attention, Ms. McLaughlin. I thought the work session conversation, and, and by the way, there were some follow-up materials provided by the staff also in that work session that are now available to the public, that just provided just additional detailed analysis. And I thought the conversation was very good. We had a lot of good questions, a lot of good dialogue, and, and that work will continue. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garza and your staff. It was a well-done report. The motion that's on the table is to accept the monitoring report on the current progress toward attaining the school board goals for Student Achievement Goal One, Pursue Academic Excellence. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. Our next item is 4.02, the Midyear Budget Review, and I have Ms. Reed for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the FY 2015 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item.
Seconded by Ms. Smith. And Ms. Reed, would you like to speak?
Yes, very briefly. First, I want to thank Kristin Michael, Susan Quinn, Dr. Garza, and my compadre Kathy Smith from the Budget Committee on trying to pull together, and I think succeeding, a document that's very easy to understand. As we seek to try to become more transparent and more accountable, I just think this document is very clear. It shows where we are at mid-year, changes in revenues, changes in expenditures. And for all 10 funds, remember that we focus on the operating fund, but in fact, we do have nine other funds. So that's also in here. Of note, we will be increasing our beginning balance from 22.8 to 27.8 for 2016, as we reflected in the fiscal forecast. And we used one-time money, proposing to use one-time money, we haven't voted yet, of 8.2 million, which accelerates the expenditures. And that's very important because this is consistent with what we agreed to in the Joint Budget Development Committee and also with the 10 Principles of Sound Financial Management. So I know the board of supervisors, if they're listening, they'll be very happy to hear that we in fact are using one-time money for one-time expenditures. And those expenditures are .8 million for the staffing reserve to hire 10 additional teachers to address some large class size issues, which we're hearing from the community is very, very, very serious. And also $7.4 million for bus public safety radios, which is a joint effort with the county. And on that one, we have asked a lot of questions and received a lot of information. That isn't a new item. In fact, it had been listed as a lease in, in the past, but we've decided, after a lot of discussions, that we should go ahead and just make this expenditure now. I urge my colleagues to support the staff and Dr. Garza's recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
I think Ms., Mrs. Reed said it well. I don't have anything to add.
Ms. Heinz?
Thank you. I just, I did also want to thank Dr. Garza and staff for finding the .8 million to begin to address class size challenges. And I think we've all talked about how that's sort of a, a down payment, that we have more to do because that probably won't be enough. So I don't know where we're going to find it, but I'm looking forward to hopefully finding some more money in our FY 2016 budget to address that issue. So, thank you. Yeah, stay tuned.
Go ahead.
If I might add, just for the purpose of the public, if they're kind of following with regard to the radio purchase, I'd like to add, you know, board members have asked a lot of very important questions about this issue, but just for the public, I thought I'd summarize, just, and Ms. Reed, you did a great job, I thought, of kind of explaining why that's a good decision in terms of financial practice. I will, I will say that this has long been on the radar of the system. The county, beginning about three years ago, I believe, if not sooner, it's been in the monitoring reports that Jeff Plattenberg has presented and his predecessor have presented. Our current radio system, the entire system, is an analog system, and we're getting to the point, it's been deferred and deferred and deferred, to the point that we've, that can no longer be supported by the county. The county would not be able to continue to interact and communicate with our buses and the risk of having buses that we're unable to communicate with is, is just unacceptable. It does give us all little sticker shock because it's expensive, but it's something that, again, has been deferred and deferred and deferred. And it is my view that it's much better to pay it out of one-time monies, as is in keeping with the joint budget development discussions and the county's financial principles. Otherwise, we would have to build it into the budget as a lease purchase that would go on for seven years, that we would have to pay almost $700,000, I believe it was $700,000 in interest cost. And it would take that much more money out of our operating budget, preventing us from doing some things that are priority for us, for example, around compensation. So I think while we would prefer not having to spend these dollars, I think we have no choice but to use them, I mean, to, to purchase these radios and to do it in a way that frees up our operating dollars and uses one-time money for a one-time expenditure. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about it, but we appreciate your consideration. On the class size, we are committed to addressing that in a meaningful way, and this is just the start. I think there's more that we need to do. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Garza, for that additional highlight. Appreciate it. Next, I have Ms. Schultz.
Thank you for leading in for me. I appreciate that, Dr. Garza. So I did want to follow up because we did have a fair amount of discussion at our last meeting about the, the background of this. And I think that maybe we weren't quite, our memories had not been jogged that this had come up before. I do want to emphasize how important it is that we're starting to change practices with staff and looking at the use of one-time money and being wise in the use, and that there are times where purchases end up saving us money in the long run. I, I still am not particularly clear about how involved we were. I know I do, I did have an offline conversation with Dr. Garza about acquisition, and I know that there are acquisition laws on the side, or policies on the side of the county. And I would just encourage on, on the supervisor's side, when it involves what could likely be substantial expenses on the part of the school system, that there be a particularly aggressive effort to involve us with acquisition processes. And that we are ensuring, when you're buying what, and I don't know what the county side of the, our seven and a half million is, that we aggressively pursue contract or subcontract purchasing efforts to buy down the costs. And, you know, we are a volume purchaser, obviously, and when you're talking about tens of millions of dollars worth of equipment, you know, I'm hoping that we're doing everything within our power to leverage buying power across the county. And the, I mean, obviously, we want good, reliable, current equipment on our buses and in our school system so that we're able to communicate. And that has been, particularly in my district, has been a problem because there have been substitute drivers who've gotten lost and they haven't been able to find them and lost in floods and all kinds of things. So this is very, very important. But I do think that as we continue our efforts with the board supervisors, particularly on joint financial obligations, that this is an example of, you know, we're, we're trying to work together and we look forward to working together even more in the future.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Strauss, followed by Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, first of all. Thank you, Dr. Garza, for continuing to answer questions on, on the communication devices. It is absolutely a safety issue, and I certainly remember the years when we didn't have these kind of tools, and certainly in the last 15 years, there's been a tremendous need to make sure that we are, have reliable communication. We have well over 100,000 children every day in a bus, and not only the safety of our own children, but we are part of the safety program for the entire county. So we have to be in sync with this. We have a tremendous responsibility to all of our citizens to make sure we can communicate. I am particularly pleased to see the language in here that reflects our, our work with the Joint Committee, with the, the board of supervisor, Mr. Storick, and Mrs. Smith, and, well, I, Ms. Reed, yes? Is that it? So that we are using the common language and so that there is no misunderstanding as to how we are really trying to work together. So an accelerated expenditure with one-time money makes it very clear what we're doing. So, and also, I very much am pleased that we are, continue to make good on the promise of dealing with the large class sizes, because I have schools in that pot as well, and that is a huge concern. So I'm very much in supportive of this budget proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Mr. Moon.
I think, first of all, I want to extend a special thank you to our CFO, Kristin Michael. You did an outstanding job of really communicating with us board members, and on a $2.6 billion budget, the amount of effort you put in to help answer these questions about the radios. I hope we haven't set an unnecessary precedent for you, but it was very much appreciated. Really remarkable work and, and thank you. Dr. Garza, I appreciate you helping to outline for the public who is listening that something like this, that's been deferred for so long, with one-time funding, which is what the board supervisors have asked us to do for this type of work, it's not, it's a one-time cost, so we use one-time funding. I think initially, this board had asked some questions about, gosh, the cost per radio. And so I appreciate the thorough work to try and explain that and, and to really also point out the fact that, as Ms. Schultz said, when the board supervisors made a decision and our, our responsibility then simply was, if you want to be able to communicate, and as Ms. Strauss noted, ensure effective communication that provides safety for our students, then it's a necessary purchase. And so I, I think that this certainly helps us as a board, and I think it also helps the public to understand, when you look at a number like this and you hear colleagues like Pat Hines and so many of us talking about our, our class size challenges, it, it is, it's a little hard when you try to understand the context of all of this, which is why the board work is not easy. But just wanted to make sure some of those points were raised. So thank you, and I'll be supporting this.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to call my fellow board members in thanking Dr. Garza and her staff members in providing additional information since the last meeting on the public safety radio, you know, system we'll be purchasing. I'll be supporting the motion. It makes, you know, much more sense to purchase than the lease, you know, saving close to $700,000. But having had a conversation with your staff members, Dr. Garza, because we also have outstanding lease purchases for the school buses as well, where we are making some interest payments. But I think your staff was able to look at those terms of those lease purchase items and assured me that this makes better financial sense because saves more money and paying, you know, fully paying for public safety radio replacement right now than making a payment on the bus lease purchases.
Thank you. And I'm just going to dovetail one Mr. Moon said. I will be supporting this motion as well, and, and I do think, I appreciate staff, your hard work in getting us to understand sometimes there, the, the issues, this one's not complex, but it has moving pieces to it, and to understand it, I appreciate that very much. And Dr. Garza, you have one more comment?
Just one, one further comment. I want to add to what Mrs. Strauss was saying, because I'm not sure that I made it clear in my comments about, these radios is a county-school system partnership because of a safety issue. We have to use same, the same systems. So for an example, our bus, buses can communicate with police and fire and safety, and so that's why it's one system. And thank you for pointing that out. I thought probably I need to provide more clarity. And then one final thing in terms of the mechanics of how this would work, because I think it's important for us to be clear to the community. Assuming approval on, on what was presented to you all tonight, the money for the radios would technically be put into a save, an account for that expressed purpose, that would also, would be reflected in the fiscal year 16 budget. So it would be accelerating a purchase next year in fiscal year 16. So be setting the sky the monies in this budget in next year's budget for one purpose, like a savings account for that purpose. Does that, does that make sense? Okay, thank you.
Yes, it does. All right. The motion that is on the table, to approve revenue and expenditure changes reflected in the FY 2015 mid-year budget review as detailed in the agenda item. All of those in favor? And that vote is unanimous. Thank you. We next move on to Agenda Item 4.03, the Revised Audit Committee Charge, and I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board approve the revised charge of the Audit Committee as detailed in the agenda item and update the Strategic Governance Manual accordingly.
Is there a second? Mr. Stork, a second. Mr. Moon, would you like to speak?
Yes, just briefly. At the October 6, 2014, all-day work session, there was bold consensus to request that the Governance Committee review the charge of the Audit Committee in the Strategic Governance Manual and clarify the role of Audit Committee. Based on recent bold action to create a new position of Audit General, in the Office of Internal Audit, the charge was outdated. The Governance Committee discussed a draft revision to the charge on October 20th, and there was agreement to recommend the revisions to the full board. And at the November 10, 2014, all-day work session, the board discussed a revised committee charge and agreed to schedule a bold approval at the December board meetings, and that is why we have a motion tonight. And both the current proposed charges are on the board docs, and I'm not going to read the whole new charge. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Stork, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Mr. Moon did a nice job. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other comments? All right. And the motion was just read, so I will not read it again. All of those in favor of the motion? And that vote is unanimous as well. Next, we move to our confirmation of action taken in a closed meeting. This portion of the meeting is where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action taken regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I first call on Ms. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who significantly, significantly disrupted the educational setting while under the influence of an illegal drug and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second? Seconded by Ms. Heinz. All those in favor? And that vote is unanimous. Next, I call on Ms. Smith for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who is under the influence of an illegal drug and in possession of prescription medication at school and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed. All those in favor? And that vote is unanimous. All right. We will go and we will move on to our consent agenda. Are we going to buy lottery tickets or what?
I just have to say something.
Consent agenda. Our adopted rule of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 5.01, approve the minutes of the December 4, 2014, regular school board meeting. 5.02, confirm the separations for the period beginning November 1, 2014 and ending November 30, 2014, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.03, adopt policy 1352, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, Policy 1380, Courier Service, Policy 13, Policy 1703, Student Advisory Council to the Superintendent, Policy 1900, Standardized Tests and Testing, Educational and Psychological Tests, Policy 510, Procurement of Goods and Services Except Construction, Policy 5029, Equipment Ownership and Use, and Policy 5790, Field Trips, as detailed in the agenda item. 5.04, award a contract for the North Springfield Elementary Renovation Project to R.J. Crowley Incorporated in the amount of $15,100,000 and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contact, contract on behalf of the school board. 5.05, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Are there any objections to the approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. We will be moving on to new business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, approve the FY 2016 to 2020 Capital Improvement Program as described in the narrative and in the superintendent's proposed FY 2016 to 2020 Capital Improvement Program summary. And I now call on Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I just wanted to briefly reiterate something that we've mentioned a number of times, but again, I think it's important for the public to know. Tonight, we have our wonderful Jeff Plattenberg, who will be presenting our capital improvement plan. And as had been pointed out a number of occasions, we've spent quite a bit of time on the capital improvement plan over this fall and we, that work continues. So, we have two parallel efforts underway and that is looking strategically at how do we want our capital improvement plan to be shaped into the future, including most recently, just last month, we began talking about educational specifications. We started talking, we've talked a lot about enrollment projections. I think we've had, I don't know how many work sessions this, this school year and that work will continue. So, we, tonight, what Mr. Plattenberg will be presenting is the CIP for fiscal years 2016 to 2020. But, at the same time, we're developing yet a different kind of approach around our capital planning. So, we have this that has to be approved in accordance with the county guidelines and county timeline, but at the same time, we have some other efforts going on. So, at some point in the near future, in the spring or summer, both of these will converge prior to the adoption of the CIP next year at this time and in January. So, I just wanted the public to know, we have, have two different efforts going on and underway and that makes it sometimes hard to compartmentalize and know what's, you know, what's, who's on first and who's on second essentially. But, this is a continuing evolving effort. And so, I really do appreciate Mr. Plattenberg and his team and everyone. I know Kevin Sneed and his team are here tonight. So, with that, as kind of a backdrop, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff. It's all yours, Jeff.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Madam Chair, members of the school board. I appreciate the opportunity for being able to provide you this briefing this evening on the fiscal year 2016 to 2020 Capital Improvement Program. As Dr. Garza mentioned, a lot of work has been done going into this brief in particular by a number of folks and including, as she had stated, Mr. Kevin Sneed, Mrs. Amy Holly, Mrs. Amy Hollob. Even, even members of our advisory committee were a part of this, Karen Hogan and a lot of folks and especially, large recognition to the time and effort that's gone in that each and every one of you have devoted to, in fact, this, this year's CIP, more so than I think any other with the individual meetings, talking about what's going on in your areas, allowing us to really get a better feel and a pulse and I feel a better reflection of what's been occurring. As you know, this is an annual document and it's used for planning purposes. So, with that, I'm going to go ahead and keep going. So, the development process, I've mentioned a lot of work has gone in this document and the development process included the individual meetings with school board members to gain the insight about their magisterial district. There's been a lot of documentation that was provided as a part of that. You'll see, we have a landing page at the end of this that links to that. In addition, recommendations from school board-appointed community advisory committees and the work session that Dr. Garza had alluded to with the findings of facility needs by region, pyramid, and school. That was approximately 150 pages of documentation, including heat maps, that showed in that work session on November 10, that showed a lot of what has been going on. It's, it can be almost overwhelming if you look at it in isolation for any one element and when you add it all together, it really is pretty powerful. It's like drinking through a fire hose because we have a lot of transitions, a lot of concerns, and have a lot of opportunities, certainly for the future. The concepts that we utilized, we shaped this year's framework. It contained basically four fundamental tenants. And of those tenants, one was maximizing existing or projected surplus capacity at adjacent facilities. The other was to enact program changes to create or maintain pyramid-wide cohorts, land cohort survival, i.e. community-based schools, build new construction where surplus capacity is not available, and utilize boundary changes to alleviate attendance islands. These were the four basic tenants that we used and in fact, that's what we articulated during the work session that we had. Enhancements. We have a number of enhancements in this year's CIP. It is a, a document that is not static. It is dynamic. We've made a number of enhancements to this year's document as part of our continuous improvement process, which have included the enrollment impact from the new housing and residential development monitoring section, new information regarding proffers associated with new residential development. And I know that's been an interest, keen interest of members of the school board that we will be talking about further and do have a briefing as a part of that January 12 work session. System-wide summary sheet on the overview and the current projected enrollments and capacity, which can be found on page 21, and a map of vacant school buildings and administrative centers, along with owned vacant school sites, which was something this body had requested that we include in future CIPs as of last year. And that's found on page 70. We have a number of current assumptions that we're making in the CIP and these basic assumptions are that enrollment growth will continue, especially at the middle and high schools. And we will show some data, some graphics that will reflect that in both a percentage and a numerical value. And it really reflects that we do have growth. We have had a little contraction from our previous projections of growth, but in fact, we are still growing. The capital program funding remains at 155 million. We went through a lot of hard work and a lot of effort with the Joint School Board and Board of Supervisors, Facilities and Infrastructure Committee, or the Infrastructures and Finance Committee. And as a result of that, we did make some ground, although I may have wished for the ground to have been much further on the field than we made. But, there was progress and there was partnering and there was teamwork. And we did come out with, beginning in FY 2016, Board of Supervisors are going to be providing a 13.1 million transfer to help offset the infrastructure replacement costs that were normally funded through those capital dollars. It doesn't get us really to where we want to be in terms of where we need in accordance with the school board policy of a renovation cycle of every 20 to 25 years, but it does definitely kick the can forward, if you will. The Department of Defense, really proud of that grant. It was a team effort of a lot of the staff, finance, and Kevin Sneed's folks and putting that document together, but getting the funding for the grant of 80% to construct a new elementary school on Fort Belvoir, that definitely alleviates and improves the picture in the Route 1 area greatly with the county, Fairfax County, funding the remaining balance. And one of the other assumptions we have is that our construction costs are going to continue to increase by approximately 5.5%. We've been trending and monitoring that based upon our actuals over time and anywhere from 4% to 6% has been our trending and 5.5 is where we believe it currently is. So, the enrollment growth. Well, I mentioned that some of the enrollment growth and capacity challenge are that our membership continues to increase. We've increased by approximately 2,000 students from September 2013 through September 2014. Our membership since 2006 has grown approximately 22,000 students. And with the enrollment growth projected to continue over the next five years to a membership of nearly 198,000 students in the 2019-2020 school year. That's with taking into account the contraction that I was mentioning before. We have adjusted our out-years, but in fact, it still is a large, large student body. The advanced academic program membership has grown approximately 500 students from September 2013 to September 2014. And if you look at over a five-year period from 2010 to 2014, the AAP program has grown over 3,700 students and we transport those students to the AAP centers. So, when we have the, had those discussions, and I know we did in the work session, one of the reasons why we keep creeping into the area of instructional services and programs is because that program is a success and it's growing. It's very popular. So, more about kindergarten through 12th grades. What this slide really shows, it reflects the general education difference of graduating students versus our incoming kindergarten class. And I'll point out that the school year 2014-2015, the kindergarten enrollment of 12,912 is the upcoming class of 2027. Can you imagine that? And this is what we do every year, folks. We take care of our student body and now we're talking about the student class of 2027. So, it does show a growing trend, as I said. We have had a little contraction, but we are continuing to grow. What's good about having these trends is to see if there's anything that they tell you when you're tracking to try and interpret the data of the enrollment and the growth. And the last time we had the incoming class as close to the outgoing class was school year 2010 and 2011. There are a number of factors that contribute to that enrollment growth. We have net immigration of 856 students. The January 12 work session, as I mentioned, will be discussing proffers, proffers and student yields. And we use the forecast construction of new dwelling units. I know that's a hot topic. And the forecast construction of the new dwelling units for 2013 to 2020 of a yearly average of approximately 3,640 units. And one thing that's been rather dynamic in this space is that what we have been seeing is not just growth, but the revisioning. And as we talk about, as you have asked us to look at repurposing of facilities, there's sort of a redefinition of some of the spaces in our communities with some of the revisioning efforts that have been going on in the Tysons area and so forth. So, the enrollment, the general education and AAP enrollment, we show, if you look at really the periods of 2014 through 2019, projection period of 3.6%, you can see in this graph, the most telling thing in here of the general AP really is the growth differential that you'll see at the middle and the high. So, our secondary, as, as you'll hear me point out, is an area of focus for us and that's one of the areas of concern. We do have growth at the elementary, but the percent growth is a little bit greater at those two other areas. Past, present, future growth and comparisons, you know, the old adage, so what does this mean, right? What does this interpret? What would this be? Our neighbors to the west would be building brand-new facilities and buying land. And we all know the costs associated with that, if you can even find it in Fairfax County. And where we accommodate capacity, we do it through additions, through renovations or capacity enhancements that we do to meet the enrollment challenges that we have, which is an incredibly efficient manner in which to do it. But, what it really reflects is that the prior year fire, five-year enrollment growth, it was an equivalent to 10 new elementary schools, 950 student elementary schools, two new middle schools and two new high schools. Accommodated with four new elementary schools, one new middle, 27 capacity enhancement projects, and 19 renovations with additions. And the projected five-year enrollment growth is really equivalent to seven new elementary schools, two new middle schools, and one new 2,500 student capacity high school. The future six-to-10-year enrollment growth is equivalent to two new 2,500 capacity high schools. It gives you an idea of the magnitude and the significance and the size and the scope of really what this CIP reflects and what we're presenting before you this evening. So, the CIP summary, where are we concerned? What are our areas of concern? You've heard about, a number of you speaking about the Richmond Highway Quarter, the Northwest County Dulles Route 28 area, the Tysons Vienna Silver Line Development Quarter and others. I would, I would also say and suggest that the middle schools, as I alluded to when you looked at that percent growth, are definitely an area of concern. And we did provide a summary of all of the areas of concern and that is also on the landing page I'll get to in a minute. So, the capital project summary, new construction. This will point out what we have funded and what isn't funded. We have, in the Route 1 area, we have funded a new elementary school, the new Fort Belvoir Elementary School, the grant funding with that, Northwest County Elementary School unfunded, Fairfax Ocean area unfunded, and a future Western area high school is unfunded. Capacity enhancements, the addition to Westbury Elementary School is, was approved in the 2013 bond and the addition to South Lakes High School is approved in the 2013 for planning and the construction is anticipated to be in the 2015 bond. Renovation summary, this is just a listing that really shows what we've got going on. The construction to be completed by 2015, 2016 through 2020, and those under construction or in planning by 2021. The five-year CIP requirements, these slides really just reflect with the unfunded portion. You can see what is funded and what is unfunded. They're part of our standard presentation and I won't belabor you because I know you've seen these before and we'll be able to reflect on these in time for our upcoming work session. What this one reflects is Northwest County Elementary School of $8 million and what I mentioned on the previous slide, our unfunded portion of $8 million. For capacity enhancements, we have an unfunded portion of $14 million. And then, when you look further on the renovations, that's where we have the biggest opportunity for funding. And also, as I alluded to, we're not anywhere near our 20- to 25-year renovation cycle. And it's, it's grown to an unfunded portion of $613 million. Site acquisition, we have a little bit of money for that, but again, looking for site is, is pretty sporting at best. And we have found that we've been able to stretch our capital facility dollars through expansion and enhancements and additions to our existing facilities. That gets into another conversation that I know a number of you brought up about size of facilities, what's appropriate. And I know through our work session, we'll go into much greater detail about that theoretical and really functional concept that we do have to be mindful of. Special program facilities, that's been funded really for such things as AAP additions and the like. And here's a graphical representation of that showing the renovations versus the new construction or special programs over the five years in percentages and really just showing the summary and then really what our average annual expenditures have been by previously authorized amounts, amounts that have been unspent, even though I alluded to our cap of 155 plus the addition that's been added to it. Expenditures beyond the five-year CIP, that really, again, inside the CIP document that I'll be talking about a little further, it, it shows not only in this document the cash flow, but it also identifies the projects that are included in the cash flow project. But, it really, again, it reflects the 593 million required of that, the new construction of close to 200 million and a little over 400 million in renovations. So, what are our next steps? Our next steps are that we have the, obviously, this presentation to really kick off, even though we already started the CIP season quite some time ago and it really has become almost a, like the budget, a year-round process. Tonight's presentation really gives the, the summary document of where we are and where we're headed. We do have a public hearing on Tuesday, January 6 and we have a work session Monday, January 12. And as I mentioned, on that work session on January 12, we will also be discussing proffers. That's also on the agenda. And then, of course, the action, as Dr. Garza alluded to, which is on Thursday, January 22, to be folded into the county's CIP process. Now, as I mentioned, on this web link, website link that we have, it is a landing page. And on that landing page, you will find a number of resources. In fact, it's the plethora of all CIP information that we have. You can find the capital improvement program, the 96-page document that we have here that we have moved as a part of our initiatives to be paperless. And then, also, the capital improvement plan- And then, also, the capital improvement plan presentation you received this evening. We have a number of different attachments, the findings of the facility needs summary that was shared at the previous work session. You have the facility needs report. You also have the solution maps that were provided by staff. You have the enrollment and programmatic information, the new heat maps that I know a number of you found to be helpful, and the potential solutions, both for the short term, as well as all the prior year CIPs that had been presented. So, with that, that's a very brief overview of the 20-some slides that I had, 22 slides that I had. I wanted to go ahead and touch on that. So, again, this is for information this evening, and we do have subsequent work sessions where, if you have any really detailed level of questions, which, you know, in addition to ones you've had previously, we'll be happy to provide answers at that time as well. So, with that, I'm done, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. Any colleagues with questions at this time? Remember, we will have a full work session on January 12. Okay, Ms. Schultz, followed by Mr. Stork.
So, first of all, I'm going to say I love at the back of the CIP, and I'm going to go to the page, page 69 in particular, which is sort of that hot, a hot map for future growth. I'm not sure that if births is the only thing, because I also think that housing developments and concentrations of, you know, the density of those housing developments is another important element to this, and I'm hoping that maybe by the time we get to a final, we might see something like that. But this is how we start to understand where some of the issues are down the road. And so, it's things like this that I think are very helpful to see. So, thank you for that. Also, I think the size of some of these maps in terms of by region and indicating the out-year capacity utilization, I'll just say, for example, on page 29, where it shows middle school capacity utilizations in the out-years, is very, very important because it, I think it's adding that visual to some of the data that makes it more meaningful and, again, helps us to understand. The one thing that I'm a little more than disappointed that I don't see in here with pages 20, 20, and 21 is we've once again showed historical membership and projected membership, but we haven't done, we haven't shown our work. And I was really hoping that this time around, that we were going to see a, "This is what we said was going to happen. This is what happened, and this is how right we were." And with the pyramids being broken up across the, or throughout the back of the CIP, you have to look within each pyramid and determine, you know, for example, Region 1, you know, has Pyramid, Pyramid, Pyramid. And this is on page 37, I'm just using this as an example. So, you have Hernan High School, and you have what the current capacity is, what the current enrollment is, and roll out five years on what we projected the membership to be, but where's the look in the rearview mirror? So, I'm hoping that, you know, as we continue to work towards a final CIP, we can keep working with staff to show that, because I think that is the critical factor, is what is the trajectory been at an individual school-building level? Because that's where the principal feels the pressure come August if, you know, 106 more elementary students show up than she was expecting. Or, you know, Dr. Garza, we've had conversations around if, what happens if there's 72 fewer students who show up? You know, I know Pat, Ms. Heinz is a former teacher, you know, she's not in favor of de-staffing if we wind up with fewer. So, you know, those are, those are the issues that I think are very germane at an individual, driven down to the school level, that I'm hoping that by the time we get to a final CIP, we, I see a little bit more of. I don't know if you care to comment. I know this is not a surprise for you to hear this from me.
No, Ms. Schultz, it's not a surprise whatsoever, actually. In fact, you know, one of the reasons why we are revamping and in our attempt of working with a consultant to design a new demographic system, I mean, you've heard it about many things. We have exceeded our useful life of the projection software that we had. It's a legacy system. But what that provides us is the opportunity to go ahead and break down all the component parts as to why we got the data the way we had in the past, where it came from. It was an outcropping and a growth of good methodologies for its time. And like many things, it is just, it doesn't fit the bill for us right now. Things have changed. And to your point, the historical data hadn't been maintained to the level of granularity that you prefer. And we've had these conversations, and I don't disagree with you. To that end, trying to recreate all that historical data right now would be rather labor-intensive. So, I know your desire to get it in there so that we can look at that, but it is something that Mr. Sneed has pointed out, that you absolutely have to know and have historical data so that you can take a look at what you did, what were the assumptions that were made, what was the mindset of the projection methodology at the time, and then what actually happened, okay? We have a number of different elements that go into that, but that's an, that's a broad simplification of a much more complex answer of the number of different programs that we have, the number of different permissions we provide, special ed, AAP, and et cetera. But no, your point's not lost at all.
And just one last comment. The, for the first time on page 70, as you referenced in your presentation, we're showing FCPS-owned vacant sites. And that's another thing that, you know, I'm hoping to be talking to my colleagues a lot about, is the underutilization, and, you know, to some degree, we had a conversation earlier this evening, the underutilization of taxpayer resources and the growing premium there is on land and facilities in Fairfax County, and how we have an obligation to have a tremendous amount of stewardship with the existing property, considering the climate that's out there and the projected growth in our student population. But I thank you for working with us, and I look forward to continuing to work with it as we get towards a final CIP.
Mr. Stork, followed by Ms. Evans.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, I'm pleased to see the Richmond Highway and Fort Belvoir improvements in there, and I know we've been talking long and hard about that, they're overdue, and I know the overcrowding, and we're looking forward to having that addressed. And I know, as we all have been discussing, it's essential that we have a study before we initiate construction there, so the community has an opportunity to engage and provide us with their insight and input as to how those renovation dollars and that new construction dollars should be used to add additional classrooms in one school versus another, or even to build a new school, which the funding is in here for. So, I'm just kind of making the point to the community and really reminding all of us that we need that study in order to be able to drive some of the other renovations and new construction that we need to address the overcrowding. The assumptions in here about projects approved without bonds and with bonds, and that's really, it's the part that's really unfunded at this time. The slide 19 where you referenced that, those are just bonds that have been approved to date. So, the next bonds that we approve would reduce that total of those approved without bonds. I mean, those projects without approved bonds. I'm really, I'm trying to, I'm leading to another question, but I just want to confirm the basics of what you're referencing on the slide 19. So, the next bond would have, it's a two-year bond, would have at least, let's say, $300 million or so funding in it, and that would mean that we reduce the 636 to something about another $300 million or so that would be still unfunded. Do you anticipate that there will be other sources of funding, or for the purposes of the five-year, you're looking at two bond funding cycles to pay for what's here, and that will cover what's presented here? In other words, you know, over this five years, there's bond money that's being, that will be requested from the public, and that bond money will fund the projects that are listed in here?
Yes. The way that I view it is that two bond cycles would basically cover that component. So, you could do the division to, if you were to divide the 636 million that was unfunded into two bond referendums, that would be an approximation. They do vary. You know, we do work with the county when we actually go out to see exactly what is tenable. But, you know, and that is a simplification, because things do change and come into the mix. That's why it's an annual presentation of the CIP. But the basic premise behind that, you are correct, Mr. Stork.
And it follows to my next question, which is the core. We have, at least I've discussed, and I know we've discussed on the board many, many times, that we have approximately a billion and a half, 1.5 billion-dollar, if you will, deficit or shortage of capital dollars that we need to fund the projects that we believe that we need to have. And I use that generally, but I want to, I want to get a sense of whether or not that's accurate, or that's more over the next 10 years, or, and if that's not possible to answer at this point in time, I want to, I want to be able to take to the public when I talk about capital funding, the deficits that I believe that we have in new construction and renovation, and talk about those in terms of the proposals that we have, the CIP proposals that we have here versus what is likely to be funded. In other words, the projects that are listed in here were pared down from what we really would need to have in order to fit with the two cycles of bonds that we expect over the next five years. And if that's a yes, then great. If not, I mean, what's, if it's a no, you're not sure, then please provide us with some background, so I can really educate the public about what the capital dollar shortages are, which I think exist.
Yeah, we'll be happy to update the figures for you, Mr. Stork, and provide them to all the school board members. They, the components that were articulated as part of the infrastructure finance committee included the renovation, included the new construction needs as a subcomponent, but we also include the major infrastructure, which is major maintenance. So, there was a component of our overall infrastructure that isn't included or reflected here, in addition to the funding that the county is doing. So, we'll be happy to update that information for you.
And I think it's important that the public understand what that is, because it's tough for us to request that we need more money without them understanding what we're not funding already. And the last point is just, on the 5.5% increase in construction costs, is that based on experience over the last year or two, or the last five years, or that's a trend line that you see heading that way? Because we know for a while, construction costs were flat, actually, for many years, they were flat. And at one point in time, we were projecting 7.5% construction cost increases. That's about 10 years ago. So, 5.5, is that just an estimate of what we see coming, or that's what we're paying right now over projects that we paid four or five years ago?
Well, that's what we're seeing, and that's what we're anticipating and projecting. Even in those flat periods, there've been certain materials that just went up, and for some reasons, we couldn't, we couldn't totally understand them until we found out, you know, a little bit further behind about who was ordering all the steel, whatever items that may have been going up, whether it was copper, whether it was gypsum. I mean, we had a situation, this is a long time ago, but where one of the plants was taken down, the gypsum plants that made drywall, went down for maintenance and repair, and they had some issues with it. They couldn't bring it back online. Well, the demand didn't go away for the drywall, and...
So, the 5.5% is currently what you're seeing?
Based on experience, and then projected for...
So, would that be also five years from now, the same 5.5% you would expect to be?
We're anticipating that that's a reasonable projection based upon our past experience. And I can tell you, our track record's been pretty good. We do update that annually, though. I mean, it is something that if we see some major shift in the economy that surprises us, you may see something different. But that's why when I mentioned that, I said anywhere between 4% to 6%. You mentioned the 7.5 that was, that was really outside that bell-shaped curve, 4% to 6%. But historically, that's been where we've really been seeing, that's been the sweet spot, if you will.
Well, we know it has a major impact, obviously, on the projects that we can find. And I'm looking, and I'm really pleased to see that we will hopefully catch up on the bond funding over the next couple of years. I know we have extra bond funding that we're still behind utilizing, and I know with the demand that we have, I'd sure like to see us catch up on that, so our bond funds are synchronized better with our actual construction dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, followed by Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. And I want to start by saying I very much appreciate the early conversations that we had, Dr. Garza, with you and with Mr. Plattenberg and staff to talk about some of the specifics. So, I think having that conversation early so we can get some details is very much appreciated. I think one critical point that we just need to keep making, even though we all know it and we understand it, is that our needs so far exceed our resources. And what you've laid out here makes it very, very clear. And so, I know that we have worked very hard with the county board of supervisors to try to raise the amount that we get. I think, I would, I would love to, like you, I would have loved to have been even farther along with that. But I think we can't emphasize that enough, that we still are way behind on our resources and getting farther behind. I do want to point out, we're, of course, very proud about Bailey's Upper. It's on the cover of our CIP this year, and again, congratulations and kudos on turning that around and getting that truly crisis situation taken care of. At the same time, I am still seeing a whole lot of orange and red in my part of the world. And so, I was a little concerned that in looking at the priority areas, that Eastern Fairfax is not still on there. I'm just seeing a whole lot of orange and red, and particularly at the elementary school level, when you look at the schools that are projected to be 30% capacity or above in 1920, three of the five are inside the Beltway. I'm seeing red at the middle school level, and of course, we've been talking about how Glasgow and Stewart are expected to be significantly over capacity. So, I just want to point out that even though we have these areas that are of significant concern, that is not to diminish the needs where we continue to have them, and the projections are very, very high. So, I know we're looking at some solutions, and we will continue to have those conversations as well. I did have a question about our projections. Do we take into account projected development? That, I mean, do we take into account projected development? And I'm sure you know the reason I'm asking. We have the Seven Corners revisioning that might add thousands of units to an area where we are already significantly, you know, at or over capacity in our schools. Does this projection take that into account, or does that not happen until it's farther in the approval process?
It does when it is, and to your point, it does when it is at the appropriate time. And that's kind of a, that's kind of a kluge answer. But the reality is, when you look at the student yield projections that are associated with any development, we work really closely with the county. It's a really good partnership that we don't herald or talk about very often. And we'll go into much more greater detail at the work session about this, but the reality is that we do take it into consideration. We do put it in our forecast. But keep in mind, when they're looking at the planning process, they're looking at subdivision developments and plans that have to go through a rather extensive process of approval, especially if it's a change in zoning with the planning commission. And so, as they continue to modify, whatever the vision of their plan is, whatever the developer might be finding in terms of buildable units, in terms of density of units through the comprehensive master plan as amended, they go through an adjustment period, much like what has been happening in the Seven Corners Plan, with them breaking out one portion. There was a lot of community concern. They broke out that one piece to, I think it was referred to as the Sears area, but that one piece was broken out because they felt that it was more complicated or complex than the remaining portion of the plan. But we do work with them, and as they modify and adjust, we do recalculate our yields. Now, when a developer goes ahead and actually submits the plan for approval, some of those developments don't conclude for, can be up to 40 years. They can be rather rapid. Avalon Bay at the Mosaic here, they're a firm that's known for coming in, getting things done, and getting out. So, part of their program, part of their initiatives are all heavily cash-funded before they come in. They've got a system and an approach to doing it. Not all developers operate that way. In fact, most have a time elapsed or triggers, and that's why some of the proffers come at certain switchgear marks, where like your fuse box, something will trigger, and then all of a sudden, we'll get another issue into proffer funding. So, when we look at it, we look at really the completion and the, from the inception to the completion of development, we try to gauge that forecast as to when, let's say, the economy's doing well and it's a residential development, and we look at the yields of the residential units. When they are planning to deliver so many units in a period of time, we do that calculation. And then, we look to see exactly if they're on mark for what their plan was, and we adjust accordingly. That's why we take a look at the zoning. We'll get into a lot more of that, I'm sure.
And I was going to say, I will follow up with you either, you know, at the work session or just one-on-one to ask you specifically about... session or, or just one-on-one to, to ask you specifically about that area. Because that's, that's of intense interest to, to my constituents. And, you know, you mentioned proffers and the student yield formula. We've had some conversations about that. I'm also going to want to pursue that, and what, the, the amount of proffers that we get, which certainly doesn't fund the total cost for our students by, by any means, and whether there's a, a need to change either the, the formula and/or the, well, the student yield and the amount of, of proffers, if that's possible. And I know you've adjusted it recently.
Yeah.
So we can have that conversation. And lastly, I, I, I agree with Mrs. Schultz about, I know projections are, are, we, we improve them all the time, and yet at the same time, we're, there are things we can't take into account, and I understand that. I think it would be valuable for us to have a clearer picture of that. We've had some moderation at the elementary school level, which you've told us about. And then I see in the, the paper talking about a huge increase in birth rates. And I'm wondering how, how that is going to affect this, you know, maybe not next year, maybe not the year after that, but five, or five years from now. So we need to be talking about that, too. Is this just a dip that we've seen? Or is this, and I, I, I hope that, that, that you're taking into account, looking at birth rates and that sort of thing, and, and making those two pictures come together.
That's an excellent question, Ms. Evans. We do, in fact, take into account the birth rates. And then we go back and see what was the yield, if you will, based upon the birth rate data. We'll go into more detail in the work session on that.
Right.
Because there are percentages associated with each year. We had a little bit of a surprise this year on what the birth rate was versus what we received. And so, yeah, that's, that'll be an interesting conversation because we do track it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Ms. Heinz, follow up, and Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank you and staff and all the volunteers in the community, F-PAC, for helping out with this, because I think this is a CIP that's actually pretty honest about some difficult questions, you know, that we know we're going to need to look at things like boundaries and programming, and you know, that's just, that's the reality, and we might as well put it in a document and start talking about it. I, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. I look forward to, you know, further conversations about it. I just wanted to ask, because I've already had a question from one school about, okay, well, in the new CIP, am I going to find out exactly where my school is on the queue and when they're going to get their renovation? And so, looking at Slide 25, this is the sort of existing queue, kind of, that we've come up with, right? And I, I'm just wondering, for the sake of people out there who are wondering, how do I find out? If I'm in one of those schools that doesn't have an asterisk after it, meaning that it doesn't have any funding right now, and, and maybe this is an obvious question, and I apologize if it is, but how, let's say I'm at, and this is not the person who called me, but let's say I'm at Fox Mill Elementary School. How do I find out how far down the road I might be? I mean, is that, is that somewhere where we could send people?
It is, and it's on the cash flow chart. And what we'll do, what I'll, what I'll provide for you is I'll provide in detail a listing of those that are on the forecast. And really, when we go into the cash flow sheet, we look at what's forecast, what's been identified school-wise there. And that's been a determinant of what's been commitments in the past. But we'll go into a much greater detail at the work session for that, so that we can clearly articulate, and you'll have something in writing that you can refer to.
Okay, great. So if I don't find one of these schools on the cash flow chart, that means that really they're just kind of hanging out there somewhere in the future.
They're hanging out there somewhere in the future.
Okay, and that's the best we can do. All right, I just wanted to follow up just a little bit, and we will have plenty of time to talk about this, but I know that, on projections, we have a consultant, and we had a work session about this, and I forget the name of the consultant right now, but that we are working on making those projections better through, what's the name of the consultant?
Yes, Edgelog. We are working with them, and we're, we're putting them through the courses, too, because of all the expectations that we have on, well, we want something that will be a best practice for, for the future, not just for now.
Okay, good. And I, I'm assuming that, you know, the board will be getting some sort of updates on their progress, even if it's just through superintendent memo or something?
Absolutely, and I would imagine, because we've had so many work sessions on the CIP, for example, Ms. Evans, as was pointed out earlier, we, we have a scheduled, we have proffers scheduled for our future work session to really talk about how that's done, you know, what are the, you know, what are the formulas, what are the yields? I would imagine we can continue to, to talk about some of these topics throughout the spring, and we will in the future, as committed before, have Edgelog come back, or if not, at least the staff present on where we are and what, what our findings were. And including within that would be a comparison of how, how have we done in the past, and how we're going to look different into the future, as was pointed out by Ms. Schultz earlier.
Yeah, good, because I, I thought we were going to have some of those, a lot of those questions answered through them, which is great. And I just, I did want to just mention, I appreciate Mrs. Schultz mentioning, you know, my teacher status and that, that I am, we're all very concerned about this. And I, you know, I, I do think that it's obviously very painful when we have to pull teachers out when projections don't work out, and there are actually fewer students in a building. But it's, you know, it's equally, equally difficult to add teachers, and, and we know that, and there becomes sort of a fairness issue if we're, if we're leaving teachers in a place where they're not, you know, desperately needed, and then we don't have enough for somewhere else. So I think it's, it's a balance, and I know we're working on that, so thanks.
Ms. Strauss?
First, thank you very much. This is always an enlightening report, and we really appreciate all the work that goes in. It is a 12-month process. The other thing, I, I'm very pleased, Mr. Plattenberg, that you emphasized, again, this is a yearly report that's updated every year. And so the community understands, we, we do our very best to project where we're going, how much things are going to cost, what our options are, and, but sometimes we have to pivot, pivot because the projections are different. We do our best to know where children are born, where people are buying houses, how many kids they're going to have, what the job market looks like. But obviously, that's up to human behavior that we cannot clearly predict or control. So it is updated every year. I'm very pleased in, in the communities that I represent, that you are, are showing where we can possibly add on to schools to help, because that is obviously in a lot of people's minds in the Tyson's area, in Silverline Development, and in Herndon, people are asking, if in fact the growth continues, what are the options? And you're laying them out, and you're not necessarily giving an exact timeframe, because I think that's honest, because we don't know. But people want to know that we are thinking about where we're going to go, and you've given a sort of a long enough picture that I think people will be comforted, that we do have a plan, and we are going forward. And it's always, as boundary changes, program changes are always very difficult, and people would always much prefer that we could just continue to build on a site until we have thousands of children somewhere, or all in trailers. And obviously, we can't do that, that there is a limit, there is a limit to each school site as to what the build out is. So I really appreciate the preview that you gave in my community, and I think gives some direction, and I think a comfort to know that we do have an idea of where we can go. And, and I appreciate the heat maps. That was excellent. And I did go to the landing page, and it's very nice that it's all there. And I guess my question is, will this also, with it, will this excellent link be right there on the opening page of the FCPS website? I hope, because the more things of high interest that are right there on that opening page, the easier it is to find everything. So I hope it'll be there in the morning.
I'm sure we can make that happen. Typically, we do put more, the more recent topics on that front landing page, so to direct our constituents and our families to that, so I'm sure we can make that happen.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. I now have Ms. McLaughlin, followed by Ms. Reed.
Well, building on some of the comments that my colleagues have shared, yes, this is an amazing document, and both our board of supervisors and the public, if they ever wanted to understand the complexity of a county of over a million people and almost 200 schools, open this brochure up and, and really understand what we're dealing with. I think the thing that I haven't heard anybody mention yet, and I think it's important to really highlight tonight, is the fact that we have really come to see how critical it is to examine our programmatic placements in relationship to facilities and transportation. And that's really where the board's work with the superintendent and leadership team is going to be that much more challenging, as our F-PAC advisory group has also pointed out as well. When you look at some of these schools, and one of them, there's 172% projection of over enrollment, and right next door, the school, the next school is 64% enrollment. So when you see that happening and you realize, okay, it's one thing that we do boundary shifts, but having experienced a boundary change when I was an elementary school child, and then my children going through it as well, it, not here, by the way, it was in North Carolina, it, it is disruptive to families and communities. And I, I do know that as a system, we try to really prevent that whenever possible, but I'm very worried that we, we've got to do some very difficult work as a board with our superintendent, certainly working with you, on where our program placements are, that we are creating capacity issues, and we can't build our way out of it with additionals and modulars and continued, very expensive transportation and bussings. So I'm, I'm appreciative of the enormous task that you, Mr. Plattenberg, have in your charge, and what I appreciate more than anything is how incredibly responsive you are when you've got 12 board members and a superintendent leadership team, all really coming to you and asking some really tough questions. I'm, I'm so pleased with the work you've done with this, and your team wants to thank you all for this. And certainly, there's, I have some concerns in Braddock District that we'll get a chance to talk about some more, but I just thought it was most important that we look at this at a county-wide scale. We really are going to have to be thinking long and hard about some of our program policies. I think they're creating enormous problems in our facilities. So thank you for the work tonight, and everything to get ready for tonight.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg, for the presentation and for an excellent CIP. There's a lot of good information in here. I feel that we have really created a partnership, you, the staff, and the board members. As I, as I have quickly kind of read through, there were no surprises from my district, which is a really good thing, that we had discussed many of these issues and thought them through, so I appreciate that very much. For example, reopening some administrative and former school buildings, I see that as, as mentioned in here in certain places. Key areas of focus for me, trying to stay at a high level, is the renovation versus capacity. I think I've raised this in the past as well. When I look at some of the, the charts in here, I, I think we need to have a discussion about that, because if, if capacity is, is truly the challenge, it looks to me like we're spending a lot of money on renovation. So that's probably a discussion that we, we need to have. Another is the program placements, and Ms. McLaughlin just alluded to that, particularly as you mentioned, the AAP enrollment going up, and we have centers popping up and kids getting transported all over the place. And I know F-PAC is looking at that issue with the AAP Advisory Committee this year, but again, from a high level, that's something I think that we need to look at. And then also to echo what Ms. Heinz said, I would like to see something where with each school, we could have almost like a little cheat sheet that would have the status. And for example, Oakton High School, if I have a constituent say, so what's the status? Well, I can tell them that it'll be completed within a 10-year cycle, and that's pretty much all I can tell them. So if, that might be something as a follow-on or something that maybe staff could do, so that, just so the members of the community and the board members for each of the schools, you know, just to have a status. And I understand there, it's kind of sprinkled in here in various places. It may say funding in these years, but translate it into English for, for, for everybody. You know what I'm saying? I know there's a planning period, there's a construction period, et cetera, but that might be really helpful, because I think to the average person out there, they want to know what's going on with their school, right? And so this, it's probably in your head, but it's not necessarily on this. You and Kevin probably have it, but you know, right? To be able to put that just very simply, maybe it's just one more chart, you know, that has this, you know, as far as you know right now, here's kind of the bottom line on each school. That would be my suggestion with that. But I look forward to a more detailed discussion, and again, great work.
Thank you.
Mr. Latif?
Thank you. Just, first of all, I do find this stuff actually fascinating, ever since our interaction at the last work session on this, but one quick question. On Page 8, they have the capital project funding allocation from FY 2016 to FY '20. There's just 3% for new construction, and then that number jumps to 29% from FY '21 to '25. So when we do hit that fiscal year, do you think the move is now towards new construction? Is the age of renovating a school or bringing in modular, modular buildings, is that no longer effective? Or are we crossing a threshold in population where new schools are needed?
You always raise great questions, and when you suggest the modular buildings be ineffective, I always wince because of our modular building and our, our trailers that we have out there and the volume of them. But it is showing a trend that was shown in the data that talked about new construction and new construction buildings. Again, what we've been doing in the past, the renovation and additional capacity enhancement through those renovations, has really been the way that we've skinned the cat. We do have some schools that have been identified, not only the Coach McNair School, but also in the out-years, we have some new construction that is identified in this CIP document. And there is some trend in some of those areas. Well, there will have to be new capacity identified. So yes, I mean, that is, that is a trend, and, and it's good that you point that out on Page 8.
All right, no other comments. Thank you, Mr. Plattenberg. We look forward to seeing you again in the new year.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity. I would be remiss, again, if I didn't thank Mr. Sneed, he's, he's in the audience now, for his hard work in Amy Hall, and, and certainly my boss, Susan Quinn, for her leadership on this and the vision that Dr. Garza has provided in opening up how we look at and what this document reflects. It really has, I think, done, moved us definitely, if not to the point where we are providing a more transparent document. And I want to thank them especially for their leadership in that.
Yes, thank you all. For the public, we are on our new business items, and again, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. We just had a brief presentation from Mr. Plattenberg. That was 6.01. We are now down to 6.02. To approve the revised beliefs and mission statements as detailed in the agenda item and update the strategic governance manual accordingly. And 6.03, approve the recommendation of the Joint Budget Development Committee as detailed in the agenda item. Next, we have superintendent matters. Dr. Garza?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. You know, this is the season to be thankful, and again, I'm just, you know, reminded tonight with this wonderful team I have sitting over here, that I have the pleasure of working with, Mr. Plattenberg, great job. Of course, Ms. Quinn and, and Kristin Michael, and I start to call them out, but, you know, tonight, I think is an example of what the great, great people we have throughout the system, and they, they work very, very hard. So delighted to have the opportunity to work with this team and be a part of FCPS. I thank the board for that. I would say tonight is an exciting night because the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals is recognizing Carol Keem, the principal of Longfellow Middle Schools, the Virginia Outstanding Middle School Principal of the Year, and Shonda Rose, Assistant Principal at Stewart High School, as Virginia Outstanding Secondary School Assistant Principal of the Year. I regret that we weren't able to, to be there tonight since we had a school board meeting, but we are represented by Marty Smith, Marty Smith, who is celebrating with them, and certainly we're very, very, very proud of them. This morning, we had the foundation, Fairfax Public School Foundation, meeting at Bailey's Upper Elementary School. We have a wonderful board. Dan Storck represents the school board on that board. We had a great meeting this morning, and they were just very impressed with the school, and certainly with the principal and the wonderful talent of our excellent students, so it was a very nice meeting. We are in the midst of the winter season, but thankfully, we've not yet had any delays or closures, knock on wood, folks. But I, I think it would be appropriate, I'd, I'd like to recognize our custodial, our grounds and transportation staff, who are standing ready to handle any inclement weather we may receive this winter. And of course, we were hopeful we won't experience a cold, icy, snowy winter. But if we, if we do, we can rest assured that we are in good hands with all these wonderful people who are willing to get out when it's very, very difficult to get our schools ready for children. I'd also like to wish all of our employees, our students and their families a safe and restful and happy holiday. We are very grateful for every one of them and all that they do for the students.
are very grateful for every one of them and all that they do for the students of FCPS. And we hope that they enjoy the two-week holiday, which is the full two weeks, which has gotten a lot of attention. I even had an elementary principal sing me a song this morning. They had to do with the full two weeks. So we hope they enjoy the full two weeks and have some time to rest and rejuvenate with their family and loved ones. And again, just thank you for all the wonderful holiday goodies. I hope you, wish you all a very happy holiday and happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next are our board matters, and I will call on, that's what I meant. I meant to say reports, because that's what was, but I said board matters. So next are our reports. And I will call on Ms. Schultz first to talk about the Public Engagement Committee meeting on December 8th.
Actually, can you come back to me? I'm pulling it up.
Okay. Just so you know who you are, so you can all get ready, we'll be talking next to Mr. McElveen and Ms. Smith, followed by Ms. Evans and then Mr. Valkoff. So next, the December 8th meeting from Ms. Smith and Mr. McElveen.
So, Mr. McElveen and I divided up the different sessions, so I'll report on the ones that I led. And I want to remind the public that the information from these are posted on the December 8 work session, and there's also videotape you can see with it. So we approved the Human Resources Operational Expectations Monitoring Report. And then the next session that I led was the work session discussion we had about goal one. And, and just so people know, and Ms. McLaughlin, because you asked about the discussion, the first night we had that presentation for new business, the board members asked information about the achievement gap. So staff added slides to the presentation, and I wanted to point them out because they added slides to show based on the scale score of the tests where kids passed and went into a very beneficial description of that. So that's added to the presentation. And now, Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. So that day, we also heard there are community stakeholders' operational expectations. And in addition to that, we had a brief discussion about the reorganization that our communications functions are undergoing. We also had our presentation from the skip policy team. And that presentation was the same presentation that was given to the Board of Supervisors entitled "The Fairfax Journey to Advance Opportunity and Achieve Equity." And the board discussed that as well. And then finally, we had a, the long-awaited facility charrette, which was brought to us by Perkins Eastman Architects. And they went through what our future schools will hold in them. And the discussion ranged from trough sinks to bathrooms to all sorts of other pieces of our schools. So that was that day's discussion.
Thank you. Ms. Schultz?
Thank you. So I didn't know I was first. So we had our works, our committee meeting before our last work session on December 8th, went over the blueprint for change communications plan, making sure that we're in concert with and have the ability as the board to navigate any issues that are coming up and that there's an intentional outreach by staff when we have the bell schedules, which I understand will be sometime in January, but we're really not going to know transportation schedules until the summer and communicating those. We discussed our faith community outreach breakfast that we did as a board, which was a tremendous success. And I think was probably one of the best things we've done as a board to begin a new conversation with outreach into the community to ensure that, you know, some of the needs that can't be met within, within the buildings or within the confines of our, our budget, that we begin conversations with community leaders so that we can connect them to our schools and to the needs within our schools. And that was a tremendous success. We also discussed our, our public engagement outreach for the draft calendar for early budget. And we're putting together some recommendations for our colleagues to entertain and get some draft budget notes from staff for us to use. And you'll be seeing those coming forward. And then we have some upcoming issues that we're going to be discussing about facility use. Ms. Evans and I are very much in tune with that. And then maybe some potential changes in our student leadership program advertising to ensure that the message is really getting out about our student leadership development cohort that we have as a board, which we just began for this, for this school year. But I think that we have some potential for expanding the messaging on that. And that's it.
Thank you. And Mr. Valkoff to report on the forum from December 11th.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I think you skipped me. I'm getting to you.
All righty.
December 15th is after the 11th. He's reporting on the forum from December 11th.
So at that forum, the first topic was, I introduced tasks to the Governance Committee to bring forward a recommendation to the board to amend our practices concerning how we make that transition from the advertised budget to the main motion of the proposed budget. And it's too bad Mr. Becerra is not here to hear that because that was one of the issues that he mentioned earlier. We also heard from Mr. McElveen, who obtained sense of the board to go ahead and bring forward a resolution in January about Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And then finally, Ms. Hines and Mr. Stork raised a lot of awareness with the board in proposing that the school board office eliminate the use of water bottles. There was a rather interesting discussion around that issue. There was some concern about the amount of staff time that would be required to follow up. And Mr. Stork and Ms. Hines very graciously offered to do a little bit more research before bringing that back up.
Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I did want to just briefly say that at the December 8th work session, the Governance Committee work session, we did review the Human Resources Operational Expectation and the Treatment of Community Stakeholders Operational Expectation and decided that at this time, we are not going to recommend or look at any revisions or changes to those OEs. We also, by consensus, agreed to Governance Committee recommendations for some, to endorse some revisions to the belief and mission that we had discussed at a, as a full board at the previous retreat. And those are on tonight's agenda as new business and will be voted on at the January 8th meeting. At our Governance Committee meeting on December 15th, we reviews, reviewed the proposed revised timeline for the strategic plan, and those will be brought to the, the full board very soon. And we also continue to discuss our planning for the February retreat. We will bring recommend, more recommendations to you in January. We discussed the fact that the board had considered, as one of our goals, advocacy at the state and national level, and we thought that would be an appropriate topic for discussion on the Friday of, of the two-day retreat.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. And now we will go to board matters. I just want to take a moment at this point in time to really say thank you to the staff who are here tonight. Thank you for staying with us during these long nights. We appreciate you very much. We appreciate you presenting to us and giving us this information. And I also want to say thank you to the staff in the booth and in the truck that stay with us and keep us looking good on TV. We do appreciate that. And we also appreciate the long nights that we give to you sometimes. But thank you very much, and happy holidays to all of you. And now I will start with Mr. Moon.
I'll pass, Madam Chair.
Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last week, I joined Mr. Latif, Ms. Quinn, and Ms. Michael to indulge in some of our Food and Nutrition Services new offerings for the coming year. They got, they did their taste testing of a new enchilada and a taco salad. And they were very good, a big improvement. And I think a lot of that is due to our chef, Paul Davis. So we want to recognize him. And we look forward to those, them taking that feedback from our students and incorporating it into the menus in the future. Wishing everyone a very happy holidays.
Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. Just briefly, I wanted to take this moment to thank our student member, Harris Latif, for all the many things that he brings to this board. I can't believe that your term is halfway over either. That's remarkable. But I, it was not mentioned that Harris has offered to help Mr. Stork and I to work on the replacement for single-use plastic water bottles. And we very much appreciate his help, hoping to bring in some more students maybe into the work if they're, if they're interested. And then I also, I know that Harris, we just heard tonight, has met with Mrs. McLaughlin and some staff about student stress. And I know that Ms. Evans and I have met with you about stress. So I think Harris, you must be cloning yourself. I don't know how you do it, but thank goodness for you. And just echo the thanks to everybody at the holiday time, and happy holidays, everybody. And all the students and teachers and parents, enjoy your two weeks off. I know I will.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Valkoff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to mention some things that, instead of bringing them up at the debrief, I think they're worth discussing right here. I've noticed tonight the tone of discussions and the outcome of decisions. I don't know if you've all noticed that, but it's been quite wonderful to be here and be part of this. And of course, we had three unanimous votes. And, you know, there's a distinction between the power of acting in unison and the weakness of rubber stamping. And I think, to me tonight, what we're demonstrating is that power of acting together. And of course, I think we owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to the superintendent for fostering an atmosphere of trust that, because we have not been lacking in oversight. A lot of concerns have been raised over the past two weeks about the issues that got discussed. And then what happened was, we got responses that helped allay the fears and concerns that people were raising. And so I just wanted to celebrate really the good work that's, that's happening when we're acting as a, as a team of 13. So thank you very much.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Well, Mr. Valkoff, what beautiful words. Thank you for capturing that tonight. I do believe, looking at the smiles of my colleagues, that we all very much appreciate and agree with what you said. So here's to the new year, 2015. A couple of things I wanted to highlight. First of all, Illy Young and I had the most remarkable evening last week. And I meant to put it in email, and I still will, because it's always important, I think, to put praise into an email for our schools. But it was December 11th, it was a week ago Thursday. And we were invited to Lake Braddock to see their winter orchestra concert. And also, it was wonderful because Mr. Moon brought about 10 Korean educators who were here visiting and seeing American public schools. And so they were with us in the audience. But it was really one of the most remarkable, moving, incredibly talented group of young musicians. And for those on the board who know, I live in a house full of athletes. I'm not, I haven't had the good fortune of attending enough of the, of the performing arts events that we have around this county. But it, it was just powerful. I was applauding and cheering and, and standing ovations almost every other song. I just couldn't contain how impressed I was with the talent of these musicians. And equally important, the dedication of their incredible music teachers and directors and conductors. It was, I just encourage my colleagues, if you really continue to have an opportunity to go to these things, it was a fabulous night after a very busy week. And I wondered, what was I thinking when I took on one more activity? But it really set such a wonderful tone. And I told Principal Thomas how proud he must be of everything that was shown that night. The other thing I wanted to just share with my colleagues is, was noted by Harris. I was invited to attend a meeting where staff is beginning its initial plans on the second annual conversation on teen stress. And I appreciated the opportunity to be there since I had participated in some of that last year. And I think it's just, it's a very important summit that we're trying to do here in the county. And so I appreciated everybody's hard work in that meeting and the best efforts to, again, reach out to our schools, both for the counselors and the students, to talk about what are the, this subject matters that really could make this summit meaningful. And so I thought Didi Baylor did an outstanding job of running that meeting. And finally, I just want to say to my colleagues that it's hard to believe that we're closing in on three years of working together. In some ways, I can't remember life before the board. And, and yet, on the other hand, I think, oh my goodness, the three years really have flown by. So to all of my colleagues and to our amazing leadership team and staff, our clerk of the board, I see, and our deputy clerk, thank you for being a part of our efforts each and every day to continue a legacy of an outstanding school system. It's not hard, it's not easy. But I will say, one of the things that really comforts me is to know that I am shoulder to shoulder with people who care. And with that, we'll, we'll find our way through and continue to make great changes. And just again, to publicly praise our amazing superintendent, we do remember what it felt like three years ago when we started out the 12 of us. And I think we have made tremendous leaps and bounds, and you're a big part of that. So please get some sleep and rest over the holidays. We may have to just call Lewis and force him to take you away somewhere so you don't have a choice and unplug all of your, your devices. Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a few things I wanted to mention. First and foremost, I want to congratulate our, our student leaders, their new student leadership class that we just inaugurated a week and a half ago. I'm, I'm very pleased, and I think they were excited and, and I think are looking forward to the opportunity that we'll provide them. And I know it's, it's a shared experience. And we learn a lot from them, particularly their energy and, and their kind of perspectives that we don't necessarily have after three years. But it's exciting. I particularly wanted to thank, and at least recognize, Fahja Mashad, my appointee from Alverna District, who's a junior at Hayfield. And I know he's very excited. So I think that'll go great. I had office hours this past Saturday. I had a number of people coming, and they were very interested in the usual topic, which is boundaries, and lots of potential activity in the Richmond Highway, and obviously a lot of nervousness or concern about what that might mean for them. I had a similar kind of question at the Spring Bank, which is a community association I went to a couple nights ago. And they're asking about how Bellevue and Bucknell and all those different schools are going to affect them. And, and it's just the number one thing that community members in particular are tuned into. And so we have to always be conscious of engaging and involving them in the process so that they, they recognize that even the 70% of them that don't have kids, they, they do have a say, and they, and they want to have a say in what this means, not only for their community, but, but you know, the, the concern that they still have quality schools always to go to. And then I had an opportunity to see my winter concert at Fort Hahn Elementary School, and, and it had every single group there that performed. And it sounded like elementary school kids playing stringed instruments and singing. And, and you could see the teachers, and they just worked so hard to bring it all about. And it was just, it was truly a pleasure. But the auditor, the cafeteria was packed with parents, which is what you really want in the end. And it's, it put a smile on my face to see that kind of energy and focus on, on kids. I, kind of the flip side of that is, we have, a lot of our high schools and middle schools right now are doing depression screening. I particularly wanted to acknowledge that because we've made that a kind of a focus of the board to have them do that. And, and I know that many of them, if not all of them, but at least most of them, I get the, they're keeping touch messages, et cetera. They're talking about doing that. And I know particularly this time of year, it can be very important, that and even January. So thank you, Dr. Garza. Thank you, staff, for helping to, to kind of make that, bring that about. And last but not least, there are Christmas trees available from the West Potomac and Mount Vernon Booster Clubs. And they're, and there may be at other ones, and I'm sorry if Mount Vernon Booster Clubs, and there may be at other ones, and I'm sorry if I missed anybody, but I know that they both have them available, and they're nearing the end of it, and I'm sure they would love to sell out their trees, but it's a fundraising for the Booster Clubs, as always, and I'm sure they would welcome your business. And thank you, staff. Truly, you all have, you make our jobs a lot easier, and we also know we create challenges for us that we want as well, because we wouldn't have the quality school system we have if we didn't have that kind of dialogue and that kind of dynamic between us all. So thank you, board members, as well. It's my pleasure to serve with you.
Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. First, thank you, Dr. Garza, for the great job you did at the Region One Listening Tour. It was well-attended, and you fielded questions extremely well, and I think people were really, truly felt that they had been listened to. So thank you very much for that. I want to thank the Time Warner Cable for their partnership at Hutchison. We celebrated, again, a wonderful donation from this very long partnership with Hutchison. Thank grateful Citizens Association for their hospitality. I came and we talked about the needs of our public schools, and met with the Guidance Department at McLean High School, and among things that we talked about were student stress. And I also attended the Wolf Trot Foundation, where there was a presentation on a four-year study on early childhood STEM learning through the arts. It was a remarkable presentation, and it actually shows that you can teach young children good foundational mathematical skills through the arts. Those of us who've taught preschool, we've known that for a long time, but you know, you bring in the scientist and they, you know, get their graphs out and, you know, have their control group, and they prove what a lot of us have known for a long time. So more importantly, happy holidays to everyone, peace on earth, goodwill to man, and in Tiny Tim's words, God bless us, everyone. Thanks.
Thank you, Janie. Ms. Evans.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody on the FCPS team. Wonderful work in 2014, and I am honored to serve on this board with my wonderful colleagues and have certainly enjoyed and appreciated partnering with Dr. Garza, Dr. Lockhart, and all of the leadership team, as well as everyone throughout the system who just puts their heart and soul into educating our students every day. I wish everybody a wonderful, restful, joyous season and a healthy and happy 2015.
Ms. Schultz?
So it's so hard, because I was hoping I was coming into this meeting and we were going to be so thankful for Centerville State Championship. And I got a lump of coal for that one. But I have to say to the Centerville Wildcats, you know, I went and visited with you again at Scott Stadium at UVA, and was one of the most amazing football games. You certainly made it a thrill, even in the loss, and you played valiantly, just not victoriously this time. So my congratulations to Coach Haddock and all of you who supported the team this year. Also, it was a very Centerville last two weeks. I held another Student Town Hall at Centerville High School. Once again, an amazing group of student leaders, and I thank you for being so honest and open and sharing your concerns. Their concerns that they don't like it called depression screening, Mr. Stork left. Health or mental wellness, it's a mental wellness screening, it's not a depression screening. I also want to say that I'm thankful for all of our families who, you know, they sacrifice for the staff to be here, for Dr. Garza to be here, and certainly, I think they're going to be happy to have us back, maybe not my boys, all the time, but most of the time for the next two weeks. And man, how wonderful that the full-day Mondays paid for the gift of two weeks at Christmas and the holidays. That's wonderful, so I'm thrilled for that. I do want to say to all of my colleagues that you got an E-card, my environmentally sensitive E-card, so you are my carbon offset, my carbon footprint offset to my liberal friends. Thank you for being that for me, and you know, it's very nice that we give each other cards, but usually amongst us, we make donations into the community, and everybody picks something that's particular to them, but we do that on behalf of each other to assist the community. So. And then finally, a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah. I think we're second night of Hanukkah? The second or third night?
The second.
Third? Second?
Second.
Second, says Ms. Tara Kofax. To everyone out there, that you have an enjoyable time, that a break means a break. I want to thank all of our principals who have done such a good job in helping get the message out, that they, their teachers, their teachers' families, the students and the students' families need a break over these holidays, and I look forward to a wonderful feedback from that, from everybody having a respite. And I don't have community office hours until February, so I'll tell you about that in the future.
Mr. Latif would like to say something.
Thank you. Just some quick notes, I forgot. I would like to thank Mr. McElveen for coming to our Langley High School versus McLean doubleheader. I believe it was last Friday, we were losing, Mr. McElveen came in, we started winning. So on behalf of the Langley Sacraments, we thank you. I'd like to recognize Adriana Lundgren. She had come in earlier to speak about replacing Styrofoam lunch trays with plastic reusable ones. She didn't sign up to speak, so she'll be back at a later school board meeting. She's a former classmate of mine, she's now a senior at Herndon, so she'll be back. Something I learned in AP Gov, for anyone who's still watching. Under Virginia State Code, as long as you turn 18 at some point in the calendar year, you're allowed to vote in any local and state election. So my entire AP Gov class registered, I share a birthday with Mr. McElveen in March. So to Mr. Moon, McElveen, Valkoff, and Ms. Strauss, not only am I your student rep, I am now a voting constituent. Very exciting. And when people started thanking staff, something dawned on me. Obviously, I've been interacting with everyone on the school board, I've been interacting with the FCPS leadership staff, but if you talk to the average student, they're probably not going to know that there's a building on Gatehouse Road filled with five stories of people who are dedicated to their future, their well-being, and their success. So on behalf of the students who you guys work for, the students you work to support, I thank you, even though they might not know about it, they see what you guys are doing every single day. So thank you. Happy holidays and looking forward to the next year.
Thank you all. Happy holidays. Our meeting is adjourned. The consensus with this consensus group where we are tonight is there need not be a debrief.[1757.48]